And I will call this budget work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. The clerk would note that Councilmember Keely is absent. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person and welcome everyone who is present this evening. And they can also watch this meeting online at burnsville.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council's agenda packet. So this is a work session and we, our work sessions are very informal. And tonight we are working on our, we're right in the midst of budgets and budgets, budget, budget. And so tonight it's the proposed 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan Review. And our deputy city manager, CFO, Jenny Rhodey is presenting. And city manager Lindberg, did you want to make any opening remarks or shall we go directly to Jenny?
We'll go right to Jenny, she's ready, ma'am.
Okay, Jenny, the floor is yours.
Sounds good, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. As you mentioned tonight, our budget discussion will focus on the capital improvement plan for 2026 through 2030. Staff have been working hard on their budget submissions. I have Finance Director Alyssa Ryan and our Budget Manager Adam Blum here. Really appreciate the work that they've put into putting this together as well as the departments as they submitted and really put a lot of work into their individual budget submissions. We did improve the forms this year and had it more of an electronic process and that went really well, but really appreciated all the collaboration from the departments and the hard work on getting those in. So just wanted to make sure I didn't, I didn't forget to say that. As we move forward, we'll touch on capital studies and take a look at where we are in terms of progress and completion of the capital studies that we started in 2024. We identified for the 2024 budget that there was some additional information we needed in terms of some of our capital areas to really help inform data-driven decisions on the long-term capital investments across the city. As we worked through those, we realized it's going to take more than just one year. We do have a number of studies ongoing. And so we anticipate that we're going to complete those studies here in the next year or so with really using those in our long-term financial planning and anticipate, you know, as we work through the budgets that we'll get those incorporated in the budget over the next few years here by 2028. And then one of the other things that we've talked about or the other requirements of these capital studies is that we have ongoing updates and management of data. So really a system to manage the data electronically that we can keep up to date and use for future capital improvement plans as we go forward. So the original six that we identified for 2024 are on this slide. That includes the water treatment plant condition, parks plan, pavement management plan, and IT plan. Those have all been completed and reviewed by council. In fact, we looked at, we reviewed the IT master plan last week. Up next is the municipal facilities inventory that is planned for September of 2025 with the fleet study planned for December of 2025. As we moved forward with those six studies, we did identify additional areas that we wanted to look into further and really complete studies on. So those, I believe, seven are listed here. And we looked, we reviewed the traffic signal study at last week's work session. But upcoming, we have a horizontal infrastructure study planned in November. And then in 2026, we've got the parks camera and lighting study, a sidewalk and trail plan, infrastructure trust fund study, street lighting study, and a city-owned property study kind of following up in July of 26. So the next year, we'll be working through those remaining studies. As we looked at the 2024 overall budget, the financial management plan that we, that we've started in 2023 identified a 7.4% year-over-year tax increase for 2026. We are balancing that budget to that target. That was included in the non-binding resolution that council approved in December and started in, I think, for the 2023 budget. Certainly as we go through, we've had some unpredictable conditions that have been challenging to the budget. Certainly not the same conditions exactly as last year, but things are more unpredictable right now. As you know, I'll go over a few of those items on the next page, but we're managing to that and tracking, tracking those things as we go through. And this budget really is responsible in supporting our operations and really supporting our long-term future planning.
I have a question. On all of the bids that we're getting, because I've heard from other mayors, do they now have line items on tariff on a bid?
Do you know that, Mark? I'll just turn that over to the Public Works Director.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council. Most of our projects have been opened months at this point, so I don't, I'm not aware of seeing anything that would include that language. Plus for our construction contracts, we don't have a line item for tariffs, so there's really nothing for them to fill in on that.
Well, no, I mean, if when they're sending their bids in, do they have a line item?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. And the vast majority of our contracts for construction have already been awarded for this year.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, some of our recent projects that we've received quotes on and that we're moving forward on haven't included tariffs, fees, but we are, they have not.
They have not yet.
They have not yet, but we are starting to see some small fees called tariff fees on some of our invoices from existing vendor contracts and vendor invoices. So that we are seeing just small incremental increases.
Yeah. Other mayors are seeing that already in some of the things that they're seeing, and that's what I heard in the last meeting that I was at. Yeah, okay. So I was just wondering, because you talk about unpredictable conditions, and this is certainly one of those areas that's unpredictable.
Yep, as we, yep, for sure. In addition, as we know, we have potential for tariff impacts. We do have continued inflationary pressures. We're not seeing the kind of inflation that we saw maybe the last couple of years, but those continue, especially as we look at our vehicles and equipment in those areas. Definitely still seeing those pressures, really an increasing demand for service, especially across our public safety areas. So that is, you know, is impacting the budget and we're certainly taking that into consideration as we plan. And uncertainty, as we have uncertainty around tariffs and how that will impact, we also have uncertainty around federal and state grants and funding. And so we're tracking that pretty closely. We are keeping track of, you know, those grants that we know we have or have been awarded and what the status is. And as, you know, as we go through this and as we go through the capital projects funds, we'll, you know, I'll mention any areas where we do have state or federal funding planned. But so far, we haven't, we haven't been impacted, so far, we haven't had large impacts on our financial position at this point by any known changes, but it is unknown at this time and how that will affect the state budget as they, as we do receive quite a bit of state aid from, in our, annually. And then we also, you know, as we go through, we need to prioritize really and make sure that our plans are sustainable as we go forward. So those, what we're, what we're going to be presenting tonight, you know, includes all those, all those realities and all those considerations. This is just a kind of a broad view of our total capital, capital improvement plan projects for the next five years. And the total over from 2026 to 2030 is about $194 million. If we compare to the five-year period that we, we looked at last year, that total in terms of capital projects was $197 million. So we really are very much, just slightly below, so we're not seeing large increases as we're planning for our annual capital needs. That $197 million from last year does not include the Police City Hall project because that would just, that would just skew the, skew the numbers too much. But we're, we're looking at our five-year capital improvement plan is about $3.4 million less than our five-year plan was last year. So I think, you know, as we recognized a lot of increases for inflation and, you know, just needs across departments in the last couple of years, I think we did a good job in incorporating those into the budget and we weren't, didn't really see that, that kind of pressure this year as we, as we did our planning.
So say again what 2029 is, that, we have that big?
The big one? That includes an estimate for the Fire Station Two project. So that is why 2029 looks larger. So should the council decide to go forward with the Fire Station Two project, it is in there for comparison. Tonight, we'll talk mainly about the capital projects funds, but the next two slides really are all the funds that have some kind of capital in, or some kind of larger capital investment. Generally, tonight, we'll talk about most of the, all of the capital projects funds and we'll come back in, as part of the operating budget and look at the special revenue funds, including forestry and the cable fund. And then when we talk about the utility rate study and the fees in September, we'll come back with those enterprise funds and utility funds that are really, most of their funding comes from fees. So tonight, we'll focus on most of these funds, the infrastructure trust fund, improvement construction, street maintenance, parks renovation, equipment and vehicle, and the IT fund. And we'll also look at facilities and the parks investment fund. So these funds, well, the funds on the previous page are mostly levy funded. These do get, these funds here get most of their funding from other kinds of charges. The cable fund receives peg fees and cable franchise fees. The facilities fund is funded through utility franchise fees. Parks investment receives parks dedication funds. And Ames Center, ICE Center, and Gulf really are user fees for those, for those facilities. And water and sewer and storm runner are really customer utility charges. So just kind of separating kind of where those funding, where the majority of the funding comes from for those funds. Our first fund tonight is the Parks Renovation Fund. This is really informed by our work on the Parks Plan and that plan that was completed last year. As we look to, as we talked about last year, we're really going to prioritize the replacement of those Condition One and Two items and start, you know, really take care of the assets that we have now across our 76 parks. Safety is a priority, making sure that, you know, we have things that are in good working order and that is always going to be prioritized as we look at these Condition One and Two items. Removing any non-relevant amenities at the end of life. So as we're looking at those Condition One and Two items, those poor Condition items, you know, what are some things that maybe can be removed? We are doing some of that work as we go through, as we go through our maintenance and upkeep. And then we have some additional studies that have come out of the Parks Plan that are kind of, kind of, you know, adjacent to the Parks Plan or also inform kind of the long-term vision of parks that we're working on. So we still have a Parks and Trails study, Park Building and Shelters, we're going to have a study for that, Parks Cameras and Security, and then a wayfinding study as well as a recreation studies and a Parks Maintenance Study. So we've got a lot of kind of related parks plans that we're working on as we complete, as we complete our work here and as we move forward in future CIPs, so.
So when we're looking at the Parks Plan, is that, does that include our forestry plan? Because I saw forestry up there, is that's different?
Forestry, the forestry fund is a different fund and it does have its own levy. And it is dedicated to, you know, emerald ashbore and other kinds of taking care of our diseased trees.
Yeah, because I was reading, I don't know if it probably was in Council Weekly or in one of the other communications, that how many trees we're removing and replacing? And it just seems like a huge number. I think it was like 2,000 trees.
Yep, so I think a lot of that work is done through the forestry fund. I mean, there may be some, maybe some work in some of the other funds, but I think a majority of that is funded through the forestry levy. And, you know, when we presented the Parks Plan last year, we, one of our commitments, as I said, we're going to focus on Condition One and Two. So we kind of wanted to give an update on the progress of those, kind of where we are today, a year later. One thing that came out of, one, well, really nice tool that came out of that Parks Plan is the Parks Asset Management Dashboard, that GIS system that really tracks every single asset that was identified through that Parks Plan, the condition it's in, you know, what makes it up, how, how much is the value, and when it, when it's planned for improvement. So as staff is looking at and planning for parks projects, they're using that asset management dashboard to really keep those assets updated, keep those condition assessments current, and then plan, you know, plan forward using that. So last year, there was 293 Condition One and Two assets identified. In the last year, we've completed 112 items, or 112 of those Condition One and Two assets has been addressed, with 27 more planned for 2025. As we looked forward to next year's five-year CIP, certainly those remaining 154 were prioritized as we planned, planned going forward. An additional 111 assets are currently addressed in the proposed CIP, so the next five-year plan. And, and just keep in mind, you know, as we go forward, we're continuously updating that, so there will be more Condition One and Twos that are identified as we go forward, right? The, the conditions of the three fours and fives are going to change and we're going to keep, keep updating those as we go. Another, another, just another consideration, that Parks Plan also includes operational items, so smaller things that maybe are, will be addressed through the, you know, Parks Maintenance or Operations Budget. Maybe there's some siding that needs to be replaced on a building or maybe, you know, we have boards to fix on a bench or something like that. So, so some of the assets in that asset management dashboard wouldn't be items that would come forward as a CIP item, but would be addressed, you know, as Parks Maintenance does the, does their just routine maintenance throughout the year. So some of those will just be replaced or repaired or, you know, as we said, some things will be removed and won't be part, won't be showing up in the CIP. We also know that we have some parks buildings and trails that need to be addressed and certainly those, that future park shelter and building study will help inform those if future investments. So that's one thing that we're kind of waiting for before we really go forward with major improvements in those parks buildings, so. So here are the largest projects that we have right now planned, $745,000 Crystal Beach Playground Replacement. The little numbers behind are the condition ratings, so you can look, I just went and looked those up so I could present those tonight, but I got that information from the dashboard. Kellaher Park Playground Replacement is at $270,000, UTEC Pond Trail at $240,000, and Lackle Van Park Playground Replacement at $205,000. So on those playgrounds, that includes the play equipment, but it also includes any other features around the park, whether it's a small retaining wall, whether it's the, you know, container or where, where the playground is set in, whether there's any sidewalks, you know, leading up to it. It includes kind of that whole structure that encompasses the playground, not just the play equipment. So as you look at $745,000 for Crystal Beach Park Playground, that includes kind of all the whole, all the assets around there to make that playground usable.
So this is just playground proper, it's not addressing the parking lot?
These are just the largest projects right now for 2026, but throughout the five-year plan, there are parking lots and other areas.
Because some of those parking lots are really bad.
These are just, these are just our largest 26 projects, but there are, there are many other projects over the five-year plan and in 26. They just, these are the largest four.
Yeah, because Pahasapa had all of, had the parking lot in it, and it's complete now, I think. Pahasapa?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it is under construction.
Yeah.
Actually, the park was just closed to start the construction project. I think it's probably a good reminder, Madam Mayor, your questions, probably a good reminder just for the community and for our conversation, that all of our capital studies have used a similar five-point scale.
Yeah.
So one through five determining as simply as possible in the vast array of different assets that the, that we care for on behalf of the public. Those Condition One assets are the, are the assets where we've identified that there are potential safety issues, right? All the way up to Condition Five, which is new and we shouldn't need to, other than normal operations and maintenance, touch them from a capital perspective for some time. Mayor, your questions about bigger projects like a playground replacement at Crystal Beach or Kellaher, which are on these slides because they are more significant capital investments that, that would happen this year. Those two are both happening because there are real safety concerns that we have about that equipment. What it doesn't mean is large-scale projects at either one of those parks, right? So to your, kind of to your point, our replacement and addressing asset condition across the system has been systematic where if a parking lot is a Condition One, then yes, we are, we are planning to immediately address those parking lots. In this case, both, both play equipment at Crystal and Kellaher are at that Condition One level, which have put them into a priority position.
Yeah.
We're using the Parks Plan and the Parks Vision that the council saw, informed by the community, right, when we went out and said, what do you want these parks to look like? And these replacement projects, these capital projects will be consistent, both with the plan, the condition assessment, and what we need to do with the condition, but also reflective of what the community and now the council has said is important for the future of that park to look like. So we aren't just replacing Crystal Beach Playground one for one. As a matter of fact, there might be a location change to reflect the vision for future projects to happen at those locations. So really, the priority in the next couple of years, address the one and two, those, those higher-level needs, be it safety or, or high-level condition needs of, of assets, and then continue that visioning work and start to then implement those larger-scale park visions for those, those bigger community parks. That's the, the general intention of addressing, like we've talked about in the past 12 months, those Condition One and Two issues.
Yes, largely what is reflected in the CIP is taking care of what we have, right? So we're really focusing on those assets that were classified as poor condition that is either a one or a two. And so there are, this is just a sampling, but what we chose to put on the slides tonight really are the largest projects. So these are probably largest dollar amount, but there are, you know, many others across the five-year plan. I do think Kellaher might be one of those parks that might be having a relocation of their playground. I know there are a couple of those, right, where they're often, you know, secluded areas or things like that. So certainly some of those things are being addressed, but not a large-scale improvement project. These are really just, you know, let's take care of the assets that we have, at least at this time.
Okay.
Some key assumptions, and really 3% annual increases in this fund year-over-year through 2027 and then 6% thereafter, just really to keep up with some of those inflationary pressures we've seen in this fund year-over-year. So that's not the total tax levy, that's just the tax, the taxes that are going into this fund. $1.2 million in host community landfill fee revenues, so those are really related to the tipping fees at the landfill. We get a portion because the landfill is located here. So that is, $1.2 million is planned for in 2026. That's about 50% of the total landfill fees. The other 50% right now is going to be shown in the Equipment and Vehicle Fund, and you'll see that in later slides. The Facilities Fund used to receive a small amount, about 25% of the tipping fees. We did change that allocation last year just because the Facilities Fund really has a solid financial plan with the utility franchise fees. And we were seeing, you know, the need in the Parks Renovation Fund and the Equipment and Vehicle Fund really is, is, you know, was pretty great last year. So we did make that change to really help bolster these funds and, and make sure they could handle the capital investment needed in both the Parks Renovation and the Equipment and Vehicle Fund. So you'll see a little bit about that on later slides as well. Parks Visioning, just wanted to visit that. That council saw those Parks Vision Plans for those first, first 26 community and neighborhood parks in May. Those really guide the existing maintenance and future improvements with, you know, that base design concept and then more of a visionary concept for each park. But as we're looking at, you know, the annual maintenance needs and our annual improvements, you know, we're definitely looking at that, at those guides for the maintenance side of it and making sure we're, you know, we're consulting those as we go forward. The next steps, kind of on vision, we'll first of all, keep prioritizing our Condition One and Two assets that were identified in the Parks Plan. You know, do those studies, look at parks buildings and shelters, sidewalks and trails, you know, wayfinding, some of those other studies. And then we'll also be doing visioning for the remaining parks in the system as we go forward. So that is also planned in the next, in the future as well. Here's a snapshot of where we are in the five-year plan in the Parks Renovation Fund. It starts with last year's budget, 2025. As you can see, we are, that black line represents what our fund balance target is. And although we do dip below in 2028, that is just a larger year in terms of total overall capital improvements in the plan, we do bounce back in 2029 and 2030. So this plan does maintain fund balance within what our target is. You can see, for the most part, dark blue is the, the revenue side and the gray is the expenditure side. We do, in most years, have expenditures that are really outpacing our revenues. That's why we, you know, as we increased that tax levy percentage going to this fund kind of in 2028 and 2029, really to, to give some additional, additional funding to make sure that we're keeping pace with, with what we need to do in those funds. Parks Investment Fund, this, this is the new fund that really does, is funded by parks dedication fees, major projects, and I, that's kind of funny because they are very small, but these are the projects right now that are planned. We, you know, intentionally have not programmed this as we've gone through these parks plans. We're really going through this, you know, the Parks Plan, the Parks Visions to really get to a place where, you know, we can prioritize based on community engagement, what, what we want future projects to be. But right now, we do have fiber and security planned for as, as those projects are identified. Some general park improvements, these are really similar projects, similar as to what was presented last year in this fund. Key assumptions, really, I think I take care of what we have first, so that's what we're working on. That's where we're prioritizing our work in parks and that Parks Renovation Fund. Currently, we do have a feasibility study and engagement for the Pickleball Project that was a 2025 budgeted item for about 1.1, just a little over 1.1 million dollars. So that is still included in the financial plan that is for 2025. And then as we vision remaining parks, you know, we'll go forward with improvements at a future date. Right now, we have about $5.9 million that's going to be available for any future projects. And, you know, certainly we'll consider those Parks Vision Plans when, when the time comes and when we identify where we want to focus our, our future improvements in the system. And this is what the fund looks like. It's, it has a large fund balance right now, and in '25, you can see the million dollars, just over a million dollars for Pickleball, but you can also see that we've got very small expenditures planned at this point, really, again, intentional. Parks dedication fees, while we have received quite a bit over the last five years, it's not really a sustainable funding source. We do have a small estimate in there going forward for parks dedication fees of about $100,000 annually, but not really, we don't really have any large projects that we know of on the, on the horizon.
We have no land.
Yeah, if those would be identified, we'd certainly add those, but based on everything we've, we've talked about, we'll have about $6 million. Next is the Equipment and Vehicle Fund, and here are some of the major items planned for in the fund. We have $1.4 million for a fire engine, a little over $936,000 for plow trucks. Those are three different trucks, I believe, a tandem truck, a single-axle plow truck, and I think a three-quarter ton pickup. So those three make up that $936,000. We also have an ambulance planned. We do, in the current... We do, in the current CIP plan, we are replacing ambulances at one per year. So that is planned for 2026, as well as our just normal patrol squad vehicle replacement at four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's about, that's five vehicles. Some of the pressures here really demand for services and, you know, kind of the pressure that that creates in terms of shorter replacement schedules. So as we're, you know, driving, especially our public safety vehicles more, you know, we have to take a look at the useful lives and and are the useful lives that we've been using appropriate for those, for the use that they're getting. So that's something we're definitely considering and looking at, but that does also create additional pressure. When those useful lives shorten up, that just means, you know, we have to replace them sooner. Certainly, we have continued inflationary increases, increases and long lead times. So, you know, we're facing multiple years for fire engines and ambulances and those kinds of things. Fleet Study is planned for December, and that will also, that will also help to inform our future capital improvement plans and and the data. And I know that they're working, I know Public Works is working on, you know, increasing the amount of data that they have in their current fleet system, and that should help us to analyze, you know, help in the analysis in future years in terms of data for the Equipment and Vehicle Fund. Some key assumptions, an annual three percent levy increase through 2027 and six percent beyond, so in 2028 through 2030. Some other funding sources in this fund, we had one-time public safety aid that we are, I think, getting close to spending down, but part of the challenge of spending it down is just longer lead times, right? So while we've ordered vehicles, we haven't received them all. So but that that funding of about, I think it was two point nine million, two point five million that we received in 2023, we're we're getting close to having that spent down once we get all our, get all our vehicles. We're assuming annual local government aid in this fund of about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That is our 2025 allocation. We have received a portion of that, and we will expect a second portion in the second half of the year. The legislature did not make changes to this program, so we are just planning for it to be stable going forward, at least at this time.
I'm always very skeptical of that one.
So we, I think we have another two years, maybe, for sure.
We have it now.
We have it now, so.
Don't know whether we'll have it next year.
We're not assuming any increases. This is the 2025 allocation. Host Community Landfill Fees, those, again, based off those landfill tipping fees, planned for about one point two million dollars in this fund. Key assumptions, as I talked about, long lead times. Right now, we are holding, or at least at the beginning of the year, we were holding, well, we're planning, I guess, at the end, five point four million dollars. So we do have quite a large cash balance, but what what you're seeing is those long lead times really are, we're not receiving the vehicles and we don't pay for them till we receive them. So at the beginning of the year, we were carrying forward three point two million dollars in projects that, you know, for vehicles we've either ordered, that we've ordered and haven't received, and just, you know, it is just more vehicles.
Because we have fire trucks that we had to have one and two-year lead time.
Yep, so that is, you know, something we have to account for and make sure that we're tracking those, so those remain in the budget and we're not kind of, we don't want to miss out on anything, we don't want to leave anything behind. So but that just is an additional consideration as we look at this fund. It is an additional complication as we're tracking that.
So I know that the Police Command Vehicle was in the budget last year, and that's still in the budget as we move forward?
It was in 2025, I think.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think we've ordered it yet, but I think we're getting there.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, because not only do we order it, we also uplift it. We have to put all the technology in place, right?
Yep, so, yeah, last time I checked, which was recently, we haven't ordered it yet, but we are working on it and working towards that. Yep.
Okay.
We did, last year's five-year plan did include additional debt financing in the in the form of equipment certificates for 2026 through 2029. Those are still in the plan right now. I think, you know, I didn't increase them, they're, they actually stayed exactly the same, and I didn't add add any debt financing, but those are still in the fund. The budget overall does include debt levies for those, for those equipment certificates in, for this five-year plan in 2026 through 30, but and beyond, as those get paid off. But I guess the good news is we didn't have to increase it, right? Like, we weren't seeing that upward pressure, certainly as we move forward. I'm always looking at what we planned, and if we don't need to issue debt, we wouldn't, but we, right now, to make the plan work, we do need to issue equipment certificates for larger items like the Mobile Command Vehicle and fire trucks and ambulances and maybe some larger Public Works vehicles. So again, same, at the same levels as last year, though, did not increase those. Here is the finance, kind of a look at the finance plan. As you can see, we have about five and a half million dollars in cash in 2025, and that really is related to some of those carried forward projects. In 2026, you can see we've got about four point eight million dollars in expenditures and a little, around four and a half million dollars in revenues. So really, are tight. We've got some years where we've got revenues in excess of of expenditures, but but this fund, you can see that the zigzagging, it really depends on the year and what we are, what we are purchasing, 2029 is a large capital year again, so you can see that balance goes down, but we do remain above our targeted fund balance, that light blue line kind of going across. The next fund is the IT Fund. The largest projects are listed here, two point eight million dollars planned for 2026 for the ERP system. That's the finance, HR, payroll, utility billing, you know, those solutions across, you know, for the entire organization. So that is planned for 2026. Staff endpoint device replacements, that is, it is that time again, and I think we talked about that a little bit in the IT Plan last week, but this is really the the IT Capital Fund portion, certainly the utility funds do pay for their own, the utility funds pay for the equipment for their staff. And then some network equipment replacements are planned for 2026.
That was in your report last?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, last week.
These items are included in the capital plan and the assessment report delivered last week.
Yeah, I remembered where the Paha Sapan reports and all of that, that was Mark's plan last week.
So as you mentioned, the IT, the IT Capital Assessment informs, will inform, informs and will inform this plan going forward. And certainly, we'll use that to ensure that we're, you know, making the right investments in our technology. Key assumptions, the fund right now is receiving twelve percent year-over-year property tax increases. Going forward, we increased that a little bit because this fund has been challenged in the in the out year, so you'll see that as we go forward, but we are in a good position. We're keep, we're keeping that fund in a good position. Just an extra note, one-time general fund contributions for that ERP system were made in 2024, of three hundred and ninety thousand from the general fund and eight hundred and forty-four from the utility funds. Those are in the fund and available for use on that, on that ERP project.
Jenny, could you just talk briefly, or Tom, about where that project is at?
Yeah, so we've met, we have a, a group that that's met and have started the, started the planning process. I think, you know, it's going to be a big project. It was a big project in 2007 when we did it, and I think it's, it's going to be more impactful now, right? As we're more reliant on technology, it's just going to be a larger lift. Certainly, IT, HR, finance, you know, have primarily been meeting to plan that, but we'll want to involve all departments because it really is an enterprise system that everybody's going to be using. So we'll, we'll make sure to involve, you know, involve staff across the organization as we plan that. I think we'll look at whether or not we can use a consultant to help us review different products, as well as maybe a consultant to help with implementation. One of the things that I've heard from people that have implemented systems in the last five years is just, you know, also making sure you have the right staff resources to keep going on your normal, normal day-to-day things, whether that's running checks, running payroll, you know, whatever, and have the, because you're going to have staff devoting a lot of time to implementation, especially, you know, you want to implement it right, right? You want to be using it, using the software, all the features as much as you can and really, really get that. So that does involve a lot of work. And like, like I said, I remember 2007, I think, I think this is going to be much larger, so.
I'm very, Mayor Council, I'm very proud of the team for the conversations that have been happening here. We are looking at this project, this significant investment, significant resources that we're asking the community to invest in, and I'm very proud of the work that the team is doing to look comprehensively and collaboratively across the organization to identify opportunities for us to enhance the user experience, right? We all know that it's either really great to interact with our organization or be able to do something electronically online, or it's really terrible as a user. And and we're looking A to Z at our operations to make sure this is, this isn't just a, a kind of a micro-focus, that we need a payroll and a finance system, but really, what opportunities do we have to enhance the community's experience through not only investment in those systems, but the potential investment or changes to other systems that will help us better manage customer relationships, customer expectations, and just create better experiences? So the work that's happening already and the work that will happen on this project, I think, can be very transformative to people's experience with us, and that's the goal.
Yeah, and all the teams have been looking, you know, even before we were, you know, seriously into this project, even over the last couple of years, looking at other software, right? Seeing what's out there. You know, I know we ask, you know, ask our peers, you know, some of our peers are also going through this, right, to kind of find out what they're doing and and learn from, learn from what they're doing too, and what, you know, how they chose their systems. So certainly is a large project, but yep, we're, we're definitely, and keeping our minds open to to what might be the best solution for for us. The IT Fund, then, as you can see, we have a pretty healthy balance right now in 25, about two million dollars. And as we go forward, especially in 2026, you can see the large investment that really represents, most of that represents that ERP system, and you can see we do draw down significantly on that, on our, on our fund balance. But we do, as you can see through the five years as well, by 2030, we are back up to our target fund balance. So while we do spend a couple of years below that, we are working our way in the right direction, so I believe this fund is in a good, good position, poised in a good position for the future. The next fund is the Infrastructure Trust Fund. As we look at the major projects that are impacting this fund for 2026, so we have street improvements, so this really, really, this fund accounts for the majority of funding on the street side of the project. So street improvements, you know, we have the street side, and we also have some utility work underneath it, but the Infrastructure Trust Fund funds the majority of the street improvement portion of the project, both through MSA revenues from the state and our own Infrastructure Trust Fund levy. So four point, almost four point four million dollars in street improvements planned. I-35W exit ramped, Tack County Road 42 at Buck Hill, about two million dollars of city MSA funds, I believe, are going towards that project. And then we have two signal replacements, Nicollet Avenue and Travelers Trail at five hundred thousand and County Road Five and South Cross Drive at, at four hundred thousand. And I think those two signals were in the traffic study last week, if I recall correctly. So about a million dollars, just kind of for comparison, about a million dollars of those street improvements are going to be funded by MSA, and about three point three million dollars of those street improvements are going to be funded by the ITF levy. Key assumptions, 2026 includes a twelve percent property tax increase. What that really does, we've kept the property tax levy plans the same over the five years between 2023 and 2027, so that just maintains what we had planned for in 2023. Following 2026, it's an average of about five percent increase year-over-year to the ITF fund through 2030. Our assumption on MSA municipal state aid revenue, we've kept those level through 2030. We do usually see some small increases, but we want to be conservative. We're not sure that we're going to see those increases, so we've kept those, that funding just level, that allocation level. One thing that's new, we have funds from the new Transportation Advancement Account that was established by the legislature in 2023. It really is to fund or help cities fund improvements to non-MSA streets, right? So MSA can only be used on certain streets within the city. It really can, this can be used on any street within the city, is my understanding. We did receive twenty-three thousand in 2024. We expect about eighty-seven thousand this year, and our allocation for next year is about a hundred and seventeen thousand. So it's not, it's not a large portion of revenue for this fund, but I just wanted to point it out because it is being implemented phased in over ten years. So I imagine we will see some increase in this over the next few years, but it isn't, isn't largely impactful in this fund right now. Some other assumptions, we don't, we have not planned any additional debt. We did issue debt in this fund in 2023. That was property tax levy supported. That was part of kind of that 2023 Financial Management Plan. We do not have any, any additional debt planned here. It is mostly pay-go in terms of our street improvement projects. The capital planning is informed by the pavement management plan, the traffic signal study, and the future horizontal infrastructure study. And we do have a future ITF study planned for March 2026. So really, once all those kind of previous studies, once we have the horizontal infrastructure study, we'll come back with an ITF study to really look at, you know, where we want to be in terms of what the pavement management plan said, really to make progress on those, you know, critical condition streets and what's the funding strategy going forward. We'll, we'll kind of look, look at the background and kind of the history of the ITF too, so we can really, really give you some information as we go, you know, for a strategy going forward. And so with that, right now, the street, the street projects really reflect kind of what our process has been over the past years. It does not, it does not implement kind of the the plans that were, that we discussed with the pavement management plan. We want to make sure we have all the studies done. So there is a large fund balance predicted in this fund, although, once we have all those plans in place, we anticipate for next year's CIP that we'll start increasing those capital, increasing those street improvement projects to really get those critical condition streets taken care of, but they are not reflected right now in the current plan. Again, we wanted to make sure we had all the studies done, and that includes the horizontal infrastructure study. So while that shows a large fund balance at the end of the five-year plan here, I don't anticipate that we're actually going to experience that. I think once we incorporate additional projects and incorporate, you know, finish that ITF study, next year's CIP will reflect much larger expenditures for street improvements. And so I am, we will want to keep above the target fund balance. Right now, the target fund balance is two million dollars here, but that will, that will come once we present the ITF study and that will be incorporated into next year's CIP. The Improvement Construction Fund, there are really two street improvement funds, capital funds, the ITF, which funds, which provides a majority of funding for street improvements. This really is kind of our centralized accounting fund for street construction. It's a zero-balance fund, so all street projects are coded here or recorded here by project. And then we analyze each project at the end of the year and apply the different funding sources. So as we, as we review the projects at year-end, we apply utility funding, we apply ITF funding, and we imply stormwater funds, so this really, this fund does not accumulate a balance, it's just a way to account for those projects and really account for that allocation of funding. Special assessments for street improvement projects are recorded here, so those, those expenditures do remain in this fund, and we do issue bonds annually for our special assessment portion of street improvement projects, as well as state and federal grants are really accounted. as well as state and federal grants are really accounted for here. Any state and federal grants related to construction projects. Right now, we don't have any grants planned for 2026 through 2030. Last year, we did have some federal grants and state grants for Nicol, uh, yeah, Nicollet and Highway 13, as well as the I-35W and Buck Hill interchange. But those projects are being administered by MINDOT. And so we aren't recording those portions. We're only recording our share of those projects, right? Because if it's administered by another agency, we're not going to really see those flow through the city. They're going to flow through the agency that's administering that project. So we don't have any grants planned here. As you'll see, it really is mainly just the special assessment portion of projects. As we go forward, we have between about one and a half million to $2 million annually in the special assessment portion of our street projects that are included here.
Question, we're not going out for the RISE grant then for Nicollet and 13?
We, we are going, I believe we are, we are still pursuing grants.
Because I thought that we had done that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have in fact applied for both RISE and now BUILD.
Yeah.
Correct.
Me too. I'm still calling it RISE.
We've been unsuccessful in all of those applications. You might have seen my recent Friday update to you that we were
Denied.
That we were unsuccessful again.
And I'm not sure if the program is going to continue or not. So we've applied for everything. The answer's been no, and we're not sure if it exists anymore.
So I think, I think the good news is we're not alone in that, right? There was no, there was no local projects selected, Mark, if I'm recalling that correctly. Not that that's, not that that's good, but the, the good news is we do believe that we have a path primarily with continuing to work with the state and continuing to work with MINDOT directly on the project. And we'll have an update for you relatively soon from LGN, our lobbyists, on that. We're also looking at the potential of other services that might help us on the federal level. The reality is that we don't believe on this project that that's the funding path. We, we absolutely believe that it will be a, primarily a state funding path that we'll have to pursue. So we'll keep evaluating those things and keep you informed along the way.
Yeah, I didn't think so, especially with a lot of clawback that I'm hearing from my colleagues across the country.
Yep, and certainly, we continue to pursue any funding avenues we can, but this really reflects what we know right now in terms of our future, future project plans in the budget. We also, in past years, have, have shown that D- host grant. Certainly, we are using that D- host grant, I believe, on the Buck Hill project as we can. There was some smaller, some reduction to that program over the next two years at the state level. And certainly, if we do have projects that would be eligible for that, we will program those into the, into the capital plans as we, as we identify those. Next, the next fund we'll look at is the Street Maintenance Fund. It really is more of a repair and maintenance or helping prolong the life of our existing streets. So we're not constructing new streets in this fund. We're really doing preventative roadway maintenance, pavement markings, right-of-way maintenance. So those annual budgets are listed here. And about $600,000, $700,000 total that we're planning out of this fund. So those, those are annual projects and occur each year. The funding for this is from the General Fund, as well as from Water and Sewer and Stormwater Funds. They do transfer, the General Fund transfers $420,000, or is, is projected, is budgeted to transfer $420,000. And then Water and Sewer and Stormwater Funds are estimated to transfer in, in 26, $286,000. So that does fund that ongoing street maintenance, really prolonging, helping, you know, crack ceiling, some of those kinds of things as we go, as we go forward and really prolonging the life of the streets. This fund is in healthy shape. We do generally project, you know, spending what we are collecting. It has built up a little bit of a fund balance. We do have about $1.4 million in this fund, and we're, we're projecting just a little over, over that by the end of the five-year period. Facilities Fund, as you felt the shaking earlier, that's our, our focus for the year. Just a little update, I wanted to kind of just revisit kind of where we are. Groundbreaking was in May, and planned completion is the first half of 2028. Our bid day cost budget is $98,367,720. So that, that was, you know, as we opened the bids, that was the updated budget. We issued capital improvement bonds at a face value of $68.6 million. We did receive proceeds of about 70, 70, just about $73 million. So the rest, the remaining was a premium that we received. So we received about $73 million in funding. We are planning a second tranche of bonds in late '26 or early 2027 to really match up with that last portion of the project. On April 8th, we did issue or we did approve 70, just about $73 million in construction contracts. So, you know, we have funding for the foreseeable future, and we'll start planning for that second round of bonds next year. Additionally, this, this fund, although it's not material this year, when you look at the, the large project that we have with the Police City Hall project, we do fund repair and maintenance across all, all facilities. A total of 1.4 million, just about $1.4 million is proposed for 2026, so across all our other city facilities, except for Water and Sewer. Water, the, the utilities pay for their own facilities maintenance as part of the, and that is all wrapped into the utility fee. We'll have more in-depth discussions about necessary investments in facilities with our municipal facilities inventory that we're planning, and that discussion is on the schedule right now for September. Some key assumptions, again, I think I mentioned this briefly before. We did, we did remove the host community landfill fees or those tipping fees out of this fund last year for our financial planning. And we did remove those for the, the five years that we've, that we're showing in this year's budget as well. We've got a healthy financial plan. We've got a good, solid financial plan with our utility franchise fees. So we're estimating about $11.9 million in revenues in 2026 to be collected. That really funds those annual improvement costs, as well as facilities debt service, projected to be about $7.2 million once we issue that second round of Police City Hall bonds. So as you can see, it's, it's a big number, but we also are funding, we need to have those funds for that, that debt service, as well as just keeping up our other facilities. Again, as I mentioned, it addresses, this fund addresses facility needs across the city. So, you know, here at the maintenance facility, the ICE Center, AIM Center, some of those larger facilities improvements that are needed across all our facilities. And the, the current project kind of makes this look a little odd. You see $100 million in 2025. And as you can see going forward, you see that, that second 2029 bar is, is higher. That is the year that we are projecting a possible Fire Station Two project. Overall, though, we're, you know, investing about, you know, you can see about $5 to $10 million annually on other, in other areas as well. And some of that is, well, actually, some of that's debt service, about $3 to $4 million in other projects across other facilities, and around $12 million annually in franchise fees. You can see, you can see the revenues go up a little bit in 2030. That would be estimating an increase in franchise fees related to those fire station bonds. But as we go forward, I think, you know, we'll assess kind of where we're at financially when we get closer, or if the, you know, if the council decides to move forward with a project there. While we won't look at the fund data or the detailed financial analysis tonight, I did want to just kind of mention some of the larger projects in the utility funds. Major 2026 projects in the Water and Sewer Fund include three, almost $3.1 million in street improvements, 1.75 million in water treatment plant improvements. So really, you know, things that we've prioritized out of the, out of the Water Treatment Master Plan, and some of, you know, making sure we're taking care of those assets that need, need replacement in the water treatment plant. And we got just about $1.4 million in well rehab as well. Oh yeah, we have more. Clay piping, vitrified clay piping, VCP lining, $810,000, $525,000 in tank and reservoir projects, $400,000 in groundwater rehab and repairs, and $400,000 for the Nicollet Reservoir. So we really do have some, some larger investments. We did see an overall increase in the capital investment needed in this fund of about $7.2 million over the five-year planning period. Some of those are, you know, additional street improvement expenditures. We also have additional IT investment, I believe, in security and SCADA improvements over, over the five-year period. And I believe the Washburn Lift Station increased by a million dollars, but we do have additional assessment revenue that is planned as part of that increase. So that will offset that million-dollar increase. So we do have some, some increases in the overall CIP for the Water and Sewer Fund, and we'll take a deeper look at that as we look at the results of the utility rate study. Some key, key assumptions, again, high criticality items are addressed in our five-year capital plan as, you know, from the water treatment plant condition assessment. We have engaged elders to update the utility rate study again, and we'll come back on September 9th to talk more about that. Just to kind of, as a, as a matter of reference, the 2025 study did call for water rate increases of 5% across the five years, as well as sewer increases of 9.5% for three years, and then 3% thereafter. So that's what, that's kind of where we're starting, and we'll come back once elders has taken a look at our new, new capital improvement plan and our operating results, and we'll have updates in September. Stormwater Fund, oh, one other thing, and this is kind of more operational, but I should mention, MCES charges for 2026 are remaining level. So I think they increased by $31,000, which is a hundredth of a percent of our total. So we're going to see, you know, virtually the same expenses there as last year. They are 33% of our overall sanitary sewer costs. So that, that, that's something we'll talk a little bit more about too, when we come back and talk, talk about the operating results. But I just wanted to mention that. Stormwater Utility Fund, major projects in this fund include street improvements, those stormwater improvements that occur as part of our street projects, pond cleanout of $466,000, and corrugated metal pipe rehab and replacement of $325,000. Again, we've engaged elders. This is part of our annual update, utility rate study update as well. So we've engaged elders to do that work alongside the Water and Sewer Utility Rate Study. That study for the Stormwater Fund called for 2.5% increases during the planning period. So that's kind of the, that's where we will, where we will start from, and then they'll adjust that as they look at, at the new information for this year. And again, we've planned on talking more in detail about the financial information in the Stormwater Utility Fund in September at the fee meeting. And just a reminder, what we have coming up in the budget tonight was the, the Capital Improvements Plan. On August 19th, we'll talk about the proposed 26, 2026 operating budget and tax levy. We'll have department presentations that night as well. And on September 9th, we'll discuss the proposed fees, 2026 fees, and the utility rate studies, and we'll look at those enterprise funds and utility fund, financial information. And, and then department presentations will, I think the remaining four department presentations will be on September 9th. September 16th, we've planned the adoption of the proposed city and EDA property tax levy. And we have a placeholder on November 25th for any additional budget discussions if needed with the final adoption of the city and EDA property tax levy and budget scheduled for December 2nd. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Jenny?
It's pretty complete. Pretty complete. It's good to know what we have coming at us, so that as things happen, we're aware of it happening.
And then we'll also see your, your capital budget when it comes in.
Oh yeah, you'll see, yeah, the detail, of course.
So that's good. But what you reported on tonight highlights all the studies that have been going in to inform the capital improvement budget. And I see some of that with reading all of the, the reports with regard to the different studies that have been made to help inform this budget. So that's good. It's, and you've talked to us a lot throughout the year about when you get to equipment and vehicles, that there are some that has a long lead time, and we have to approve the, the expenditure, but not expect the vehicle for another year or two. And I saw that we have ambulances, and I did see it. I guess, we get so many reports now, I don't remember what it's, the Council Weekly, or that we have ambulances that are going to be budgeted in for '26, '27, or?
Correct. I believe we do have an ambulance planned for each year of the five-year CIP. We also have two.
And that's also along lead time?
Yeah, we, well, we have two right now that we've ordered and have not received. We have the 2024 ambulance and the 2025 ambulance that, we hope to receive one, I think, this year yet. We also have three fire trucks that we've ordered, that, one is, one we ordered in 2022, and we, we do not have yet. So, you know, that is, that does present a challenge, right? So we have to make sure that we're keeping those, setting those funds aside, making sure we have plans for those funds, especially from previous budget years, you know.
Well, at least we did that, because some of those equipment are now, the, the, the cost has increased.
And I think on, like, fire engines, I believe it's four to five years at this point.
Oh, four to five years now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've, we've, we've ordered our 2029 yet. I believe we ordered that last year, so. Yeah, to plan for that, and also to help, right, with costs. And hopefully, that will help us on the cost.
Because if we order it now, we're paying today's money. If we wait, we'll be paying tomorrow or two years from now, money on all of that. Okay, anything else? Any questions, thoughts, comments? So Jenny, Greg, and the team, thank you so much. I know there's been a lot of work that has gone into all of the different studies that you have made to help inform our budget, and also, which includes our capital improvement plan. So appreciate all of that, because we have some good information to go on. So if there are no other questions or comments to come before us? Michelle, you have anything? No?
Nothing, Madam.
We stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you, everybody.